Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present to the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Next, we'll open for public forum. Is anybody here wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing nobody but our chief of police in the newspaper in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and close the public forum and move on our agenda and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there is no questions or discussion regarding the consent agenda, I would make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right into new business. Item number one is dragon grant applications, and Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packets, you had the dragon grants that met initial review included in there. There were five applications. Three of them were appended from businesses that submitted last year. Just the city had expended all of its dragon grant funds, so they were given consideration this year. Two of those did submit some updates to those dragon grant, but essentially everything in there, all the businesses meet. The initial review, their projects are in line with the dragon grant guidelines. Staff would recommend approval of those should the council wish to approve them.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve the $10,000 dragon grant to Champ's Meats.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the dragon grant for Champ's Meats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That one passes.
Mr. Mayor also would like to make a motion to approve the $10,000 dragon grant for 208 Main LLC.
Second.
Got the motion and the second to approve the grant for 208 Main LLC. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That one passes.
Mr. Mayor also would make a motion to approve the $10,000 dragon grant to J.N. Investment Group.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve a dragon grant for J.N. Investments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. And that passes.
Mr. Mayor also would like to make a motion to approve the $5,000 dragon grant to MB Studios.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a dragon grant for MB Studios. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That one passes.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the $3,600 dragon grant to Kansas Learning Center for Health.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve a dragon grant for Kansas Learning Center for Health. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That one passes. And congratulations to the dragon grant recipients for this cycle, and that continues to be a beneficial program for the city, and I hope we can keep doing it for a long time. Next item on our agenda is the maintenance work that we need to do to our gas border station, so I'm sure Ethan will start, and then maybe Pat will bring us up to par on that.
So, as you all know, the city owns its natural gas distribution system. We have two border stations, one basically north, located kind of by the railroad tracks, and then our south border station, which is over close to the intersection of 36th and Holstead Road. We are doing replacements on both regulators there. This is basically preventative and planned maintenance for that. We're recommending doing both stations, as it does save us some costs overall, according to USDI, which is our contractor. This is a single source bid, as we basically have a contractual relationship with USDI because of the natural gas system. You know, there's Department of Transportation regulations regarding us having, you know, their emergency plans on file, their drug testing plans on file, et cetera, so we have those kinds of documentations and cross-share with USDI already, and have a long-term relationship with it. Also, this project would involve some welding on the gas system, which we don't have any certified operators to be able to perform that work in-house anyway, so this lets us have that amount of work, too. We would take, we're asking for a total project budget, which is a little bit over their quote, of $40,000. That would come from our gas reserve fund, which is the money we set aside from gas sales every year to have for contingencies such as these. So, I'm sure Pat can answer any more technical questions you all might have, but you do have the quote in there from USDI.
Any questions, council?
Have we had any other quotes?
Not for this work. Like I said, USDI, we've basically utilized them since 2014 as our preferred contractor on the gas system.
And because of the regulations and everything, we pretty much have to single-source this. And for those of you that don't know what the regulators do, these are the mechanical devices that maintain the proper pressure on the system here in town. I've talked to Pat a little bit about this. These regulators have been rebuilt numerous times each, and we are replacing them with new regulators now, so hopefully we'll get quite a bit of life out of them.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for utility safety and design for the gas border station replacements with a project amount not to exceed $40,000.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve this project for the gas system. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That carries. Next item on the agenda is recycling discussion. I'll let Ethan lead us into that.
Thank you. As council know, I sent out an informational email to you all regarding when Harvey County made the decision. As of May 1st, they will not be handling recycling at the Harvey County Transfer Station, which of course is a major change, and we've kind of slowly seen this evolution. Harvey County obviously at one point had mandated recycling. Then they got rid of the mandate, I want to say, a little over a year ago. Holstead opted to keep at that point. The transfer station was still accepting recyclables. Now with Harvey County not accepting recyclables, if we want to maintain recycling as a citywide service, that will involve basically Nysley taking that to their disposition point of choice. Did meet with Nysley. Don't have hard numbers yet on what it means as far as the cost point to keep it, which is why this is just mostly a discussion item this evening, either for us to completely get rid of recycling. We would assume that that would probably have a drop in monthly rates to keep it, though we do know, you know, Harvey County had a really good per tonnage contract with Waste Connections that slowly went up, and Harvey County, before they opted not to continue, was quoting $170 per ton. So, we were anticipating we would probably have to see a rate change. You know, the figures are anywhere from, I'd say, $2 to $4 of what it would cost to continue to collect recycling and take it to a drop point other than Harvey County. I do know discussing with Nysley, because of our city's size, they're more interested in keeping it as a either citywide service to keep recycling or dropping it completely. They don't know that if we go to trying to offer it on a per household with, you know, one house has it, one house doesn't, one house has it, whether they would actually get the economy of scale to make it even worthwhile for them. So, they're still very much interested if we keep it, of it being a mandated, you know, service in line with how we currently operate it. So, I mean, it is optional now. We're billed, and our rate from Nysley is for both services, so there's no difference for those people that chose to come out when it was mandatory, or, you know, the couple of households we've had taken out of the recycling program for habitual violation in terms of throwing trash in the recyclables. But it's really, as I kind of stated in there, something that I guess I encourage those listening at home or reading about this meeting or watching at a later date, you know, contact the governing body, let them know whether Holstead wants to keep recycling, because it sounds like it's going to probably be a community-wide decision, whichever way you guys end up wanting to go. And I'm sorry, I don't have better numbers for you tonight to tell you exactly what that means in terms of how we would have to adjust those monthly rates. Again, I mean, to keep it very simple, if we keep recycling as a service that we offer, we are looking at, you know, some sort of increase. And I hesitate even with gas and stuff to say maybe that will be a decrease if we get rid of it, but I know last time we had discussed the possibility of recycling not being offered, there was a decrease on bills, too. So, I'm glad they put it out there. If anyone has any strong thoughts at this point that you want to share with me, or things you want me to ask Nysley.
Well, knowing that this was coming up on the agenda, did anybody else on council reach out to citizens and ask their opinion about this?
I haven't.
I did. I was dragging people in off the street. And I would say, seven of 10 wanted to keep recycling, and they were also saying that they would be willing to pay as much as $3 to $5 more. And I'm just telling you, citizens, what residents were saying, they would pay up to $3 to $5 more on their billing to keep recycling. And I was reaching out as much as I could, and like, I'd see somebody walking by, I'd drag them in. But that's the input that I've had.
How many people did you talk to?
I did talk to 10. I saw a couple of couples, and that's why I can say seven of 10. So, that's my input.
So if we wanted to recycle on our own, where's the closest places to take that?
Yeah, Wichita or Hutch, I mean, would be my, the two with Harvey County actually, you know, not even that. That was kind of the wrinkle that we weren't, I guess, fully anticipating was for Harvey County to completely do away with recycling at the transfer station. So, that, yeah, that would have been us at least having a close option to say, well, you can still drive 10 miles down the road if you're passionate about it and want to continue it. But now, it would be more of a hole, I think. And I don't know of any community that's, as far as like planning to offer community, you know, collection points. So...
What I'd like to do is reach out to the citizens and have them get in touch with as many of us council members as possible, because we've got to make this decision that will represent you. And so, get in touch with your council member out there. Let us know what you'd like to see so we can make this decision that best represents you.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at with any of this?
I, yeah, May 1st is the deadline, so I probably just will represent a needed formal contract change with our existing contract with Nysley. So, I'm hoping that they will have pretty firm rates for me to present to you all next meeting, but I would say by our first meeting in April, we'll have to have a hard decision.
So, yeah, we'll get Ethan to come to the table with those final rates from Nysley. And in the meantime, I'm going to encourage anybody passionate about the program to reach out to a council member or myself and let us know which side of the fence you're on, so it'll be easier for us to make a decision going forward. So, anybody else have anything to add on that? Let's move on to our next item, and that's Kansas Department of Transportation Cost Share Grant Application, and Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
Thank you. Had the informational sheet there for you all to just kind of see the guidelines there of the program for the K dot Cost Share. Applications are due this week. There is a minimum 15% requirement of a local match. I feel of our upcoming roadwork, the one that's going to probably be their strongest application is the Main Street Extension because of the safety component as far as helping get rid of congestion on Chestnut or, you know, constant traffic on Chestnut, as well as the planned sidewalks going along, offering, you know, multimodal transportation. You can see of just kind of our preliminary engineer's estimate, a 15% match is $165,000. They do note that they will give additional consideration for cities that go over that match. So, basically seeking guidance from you all of, do we want to try and match more, or just submit it with the 15% match and see what happens. But that would be my suggestion of the project we currently have in hand that's probably going to have our, be our best bet of getting some of these K dot dollars if it was awarded. So...
You and I talked earlier, and you felt that if we went to a 25% match, our odds of getting that grant would be a lot better.
Yeah.
And, you know, the Main Street Extension Council, you know, we've been planning on paying for that whole project ourselves. Well, if we could get this grant and only pay for 25% of it, that's a big win. So, instead of being greedy, it would be my thought to go ahead and put it at the 25% match instead of the 15 to increase our odds of getting it. So, what do you all think?
Are we pulling all of this percentage out of one fund, or are we looking at a couple different funds?
It would probably be out of our capital. The street fund, but, I mean, the entry part of this is obviously, it's going to be funded by temp notes initially. So, basically, if we were awarded the grant, we would end up, when it gets converted, you would bond out less than you actually took out in temp notes. So, we could still decide and have that option of where we go, but yeah, I mean, we have just over $400,000 in capital streets now. So, I mean, we can, we could almost, you know, roughly, and it was 1.1 million. If we start taking out like the costs that can't be covered, like the engineering and stuff, we'll say roughly, you know, a million dollar project. So, if we're committed to $250,000, whatever percentage that comes, I mean, that's going to be, hopefully according to what K dot has communicated, going to give us more consideration than someone that's just looking at that 15.
Would you feel better, I'm just throwing out, what do you think about 30%? Do we have the funds? Do you feel comfortable? Do we have enough cushion to do a 30%, Matt?
We can, we can do 30% too.
That's huge dollars. And if we can, if we can get that great consideration and come out, come out clean, that'd be great. I just like it from other people. That's what I'm thinking.
And paying for 30% of that project sure beats paying for 100%.
Right. So, that's one thing. That's why I'm throwing 30 out.
I don't know what the magic number would be.
Yeah. Because that'd be what, 300,000 at 30%?
So if we go 30%, and we're putting that down, that's sure, and we don't get it, we're not out anything.
We're not out anything. No, we're not.
But if we come out there, we go 30%, and we win, it's a win. That's a big win.
And we'll still be building, I mean, just, obviously the mountain there is at the end of the business year last year. So, you know, we do have on deck or scheduled budget transfers to put another $250,000, so this wouldn't wipe our capital street budget completely, because we all know there's work that still needs done, and that I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to potentially obligate it to where it ties our hands.
I don't want to hurt any other projects, if possible. That's kind of what I was asking also. I don't want to hurt anything else.
So we have $400,000 in streets now with a budget transfer of 250?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Scheduled for this year.
Okay, so that'd be 650. Okay.
Would there be any detrimental impact to other street projects if we did 30%?
That's, that's leaving us $100,000 budgeted for those street improvements in there, right?
Yeah, not, not anything we currently have on, on deck. A lot of our, the other other street project that we have gone through some of the, you know, was Ninth Street. And so, we either would have to scale that back just naturally as far as the scope, you know, we looked at possibly addressing all of Ninth from Chestnut to McNair, but that obviously, that dollar amount exceeds even our $400,000. So, there was always going to have to either be discussion of looking at like temporary note financing for a couple years or some sort of financing option if we were going to pursue that entirety. If we're just doing the one intersection, we would still probably have enough money on hand to address like the immediate area between this year and next. And part of it's because we haven't done a full-on street replacement now, Pat, for what, two years, three, two years?
That'd been spewed.
Where we, that didn't, didn't go off, or didn't have some other externality that popped up that kind of drove it over our cost. I'm not sure where, how far, I mean, we used to know 100 to 115,000 was essentially about a block, but now with materials costs and everything, the cost might be substantially higher since the last time we actually engaged in work. So...
Well, and we may still have the opportunity to bond part of those other streets along with.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, when we bond out.
There's nothing on deck that we would put on hold. Main Street, obviously, 14th and Stutzman are the farthest along in the engineering process, which is the other reason why they're the stronger applicants than, say, trying to get Ninth.
Well, would anybody be opposed to me putting a 30% motion out there?
Only if we could have got it for 25.
Yeah, right. Well, with that, then, Mr. Mayor and council of third, and there's no more discussion, I would make a motion to approve a 30% local match and authorization, and authorizing any necessary signatures and the city manager to submit an application for the K dot Cost Share Program on behalf of the City of Holstead.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the 30% Cost Share Grant Application. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That one passes. Next on our agenda, we do have one executive session this evening, and I would entertain a motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Holstead City Council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss potential litigation pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:30 PM.
Second. Have the motion and the second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move back to the back meeting room. We are in executive session. We'll move back to the back meeting room.